Here.
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 We're all here today. Item number four is to consider accepting the regular claims paid over $500 and the purchase card claims paid for the period ending October 17th, 2025. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
It's been moved by Commissioner Brastad. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Schulte. Any questions, concerns, issues? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Mr. Brastad.
Aye.
Mr. Reiner.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Mr. Jepson.
Aye.
Mr. Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Item number five is the approval of minutes from the October 20, excuse me, the October 14th, 2025 county board meeting.
So moved, Mr. Chair.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Meisner. Any changes, corrections, additions? Hearing none. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Hearing none. It passes unanimously. We'll move down to item number six, which is Chair's remarks. We have two items under Chair's remarks today. The first is to recognize Anoka County Elections Manager Tom Hunt for receiving the Friend of the League Award from the League of Women Voters of Anoka, Blaine, and Coon Rapids area. A couple of weeks ago, Commissioners Meisner, Schulte, Jepson, and I participated in a town hall style Q and A session sponsored by the League of Women Voters. During that event, we were pleasantly surprised when the League recognized Tom for his outstanding service in preserving our democracy by providing voters with safe, secure, and accurate elections. The Friend of the League Award is given to a community member or group who assists the League of Women Voters, ABC, in achieving its goal of good government. The award was initiated and designed by longtime members Sandra Shanley and Mary Jo Shushan in 1991. Many League of Women Voters voter members serve as election judges and appreciate Tom supervising training and elections. Recently, an Anoka County post-election review process took place, where it was determined Anoka County had no adjusted differences between machine-tabulated results and hand-counted ballots. Observers also found that the legal process set in Minnesota law were followed in Anoka County. On behalf of the Board, I want to congratulate Tom on his well-deserved award and thank him for his service to Anoka County and the residents we serve. His leadership, integrity, and commitment to ensuring a fair and transparent elections are a cornerstone of public trust in our democratic process. Thank you, Tom. I know you're extremely busy this time of year with an election just around the corner, but the floor is yours if you want to share a few words, sir.
We've got under 20 minutes.
(laughing) Ladies and gentlemen, Tom Hunt.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the Board. I really hadn't thought of anything to say, but thank you so much. It was really an honor to get this from the League. It's been a pleasure to work with them. We've partnered on a lot of, a lot of stuff that is, I think, really, really helpful for the community and for voters, just informational stuff, but it's really been great to work with them. So I really appreciate this award. It really means a lot. It's, it's nice to hear some of this good stuff. So, so thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you, Tom, for all you do. And I know, like we said, it's a busy time. As a matter of fact, are we just seven days away from the election? So best of luck to you and your staff and all the election judges that will be conducting that next Tuesday. The second item is to consider, unless any other Commissioners wish to have a, okay. Next item is on our list today is a resolution supporting the Operation Green Light for Veterans Project. I want to call on Commissioner Reiner as the lead Commissioner for Veteran Services to tell us a little more about this important initiative we've been participating in since its inception five years ago. Commissioner Reiner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Every year on Veterans Day, Tuesday, November 11th, we as a nation come together to pay tribute to the brave Americans who served their country in the armed forces. It's a time to honor and celebrate all of them. Our veterans need our continued support. Anoka County is home to 19,000 veterans. That's about 5% of our entire population. These aren't just numbers. They are fathers, mothers, brothers, sisters, and friends. They've made significant sacrifice for this great nation, and we are profoundly grateful for their service. Recognizing the dedication of our veterans, Anoka County is committed to serving them. Whether it's through our Veteran Service Office, the MedLink Volunteer Driver Network, or the Veterans Court Program, we're there for them. Studies indicate 44 to 72% of service members experience high levels of stress during transition from military to civilian life, so they need our support. Next month, Anoka County will again participate in a national initiative called Operation Green Light for Veterans. The goal is simple, to show support for our military veterans and spread awareness about the unique challenges they face and the resources available to them and their families. This is not an old program. It was originated in New York in 2021 by the Association of Minnesota Counties, NACO. As part of this effort, Anoka County will illuminate some of its facilities, all individuals, and businesses in Anoka County to join us by swapping one light bulb in their entryway or window with a green one. This small gesture is a way to honor those who've made immeasurable sacrifices to safeguard our freedoms. By shining a green light together, we can let every veteran know they're seen, appreciated, and supported. So let us light up.
Comments regarding the Green Light Project? I know it's been a very successful one over the last few years, and, and it shows, shows the support that we have for. We will move down to the committees of the whole now, and the first committee we're going to go to is Government Operations, and we will start. Move down to the committees of the whole now, and the first committee we're going to go to is Government Operations, and we will start with Facilities Management and Commissioner Jepson.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Government Operations Committee met on October 14 at 1:00 PM at the Government Center, and there was no one in attendance to make any public comment. There are four items actually on the Government Ops Consent Agenda, two for Facilities and two for Finance Administration. The two items for Facilities Management are similar in that they fund the relocation renovation costs for two departments here within Anoka County. The first is Contract C0011880, and it is with Ebert for $373,000. Veteran Services will be relocated from the third floor to the main level and will be more accessible to our veterans, as well as offer much-needed and convenient dedicated parking spots for those who have given so much for our country. The second contract is C0011881 with GCM for $693,072. Human Resources Department will be relocating from the second floor to the third floor. Both these contracts will be paid through Anoka County's Building Fund. So moving on to Finance Administration, the committee recommends that the Board pass a new social media policy and a revised procurement policy. We currently do not have a formal social media policy, but as social media continues to expand across all departments within Anoka County for public communication, community engagement, and service delivery, it is increasingly important that we establish clear guidelines. It ensures that all social media communication is consistent, reflects our mission, maintains professionalism, and minimizes the risk of misinformation or inappropriate content, whether intentional or unintentional. The second item is to revise our already existing procurement policy to update approval thresholds and delegations, increase payment and performance bond threshold, remove references to certain types that would be located more appropriately in their own policy. And with that, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make the motion to approve these four items on the consent agenda.
I have a motion before I ask for a second. Does anybody wish to take any of these off to vote separately? Seeing none. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Jepson and seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Any questions or comments? Does a roll call vote?
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Any informational items from the committee meeting, Commissioner?
Yeah, just a couple, just a couple things. We discussed additional items to prioritize during our 2026 legislative session. We also discussed the need to change the Bond Council practice, which provides us legal services related to municipal debt financing of bonds. The majority of the practice where we had been contracting since 2017 moved to Cutac Rock LLP, so that's where we will now also contract. We were also informed that the county attorney's office purchased a vehicle for a full-time investigator whose primary function will be investigating fraud and preventing fraud from Human Services Economic Assistance Department. We reviewed the third quarter investments updates, all of which were very, very well and healthy. And finally, Mr. Chair, we discussed the 2026-2030 Proposed Capital Improvement Plan. And with that, that ends my Government Operations Committee report.
Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. Anyone else have any comments regarding the informational items? All right, we'll then move down to Human Services, and Commissioner Meisner.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The Committee of the Whole, Human Services, we met on Tuesday, October 21st at 8:30 AM in this building. There were no public comments in person. I did not receive any via email, but those are always accepted. Anyone may email me at mandy.meisner@anokacounty.mn.gov. We have several items on the slate today. First up is under Public Health and Environmental Services. This is to authorize to apply and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Health, not to exceed $175,000. If awarded, the project contract period will support February 26 through January 2027. So this project will expand on the existing work already led by SHIP, and also will include school-based education and outreach. Another key component of this grant is the initiative of a countywide youth coalition, and this is composed of students from Anoka County. The next on our agenda is also under Public Health and Environmental Services. This is the Homeland Health Contract Renewal. This is to authorize to approve Amendment One to Contract C0011288 with Homeland Health Specialists for Conducting Community Vaccine Clinics. The contract max for the term of December 1st, 2024, through March 31st, 2026, will increase from $50,000 to $150,000. So essentially, what this is about is the pace of clinics is an average of one each week, and it's been offered to all public school districts in Anoka County. These are for students newly arriving to Minnesota through the Anoka-Hennepin Welcome Center in Coon Rapids, and since its inception, we have served 200 clients with 694 vaccines given. This has been a highly successful program, and the reason for this increase is essentially there's a, there's a demand for it. So I will make note that this is funded federally and state. Again, we are simply responding to the need for vaccine clinics. The next is under Community Corrections. This is to authorize to contract with Spiral IFX Interactive. This is in Pinewood, Texas, and this is for health-secure EMR correctional medical management software, and this is to be used by the Anoka County Jail, the Workhouse, and Juvenile Detention Center for a two-year term from January 1st, '26 through December 31st, '27, with two two-year auto renewals through December 2031. So the Department of Corrections does require that correctional facilities utilize an electronic medical record systems if possible. We are going through some changes internally for that, and this EMR is familiar to the medical director and will allow Anoka County healthcare staff to communicate with our contracted medical direction 24 hours a day, seven days a week, while maintaining accurate patient records. The next on our agenda is Social Services. This is to authorize to apply for and accept the Annual Children's Mental Health Screening Grant allocation for 2026 from Minnesota Department of Human Health, Behavioral Health Administration, and this is Contract C0011551. In 20, excuse me, in 2003, the Minnesota Legislature added a mandate for mental health screening for children and youth in protection and juvenile justice. Each year, the county receives an allocation from the state to fund the costs of the mental health screening and related services. So this is just procedural. This is also funded 100% by the state. The next up is under Social Services. This is to approve an Amendment One to Contract C0011161 with Jacob's Ladder Family Services for Parent Education and Supervised Parenting Time Services, and this is located in Minnetoka. So this has been a contract for quite some time. We are requesting basically some following changes: to amend and extend the contract dates from December 31st, 2026, also to amend contract maximums from $100,000 to $150,000, and this is for 2025, and $150,000 for 2026. Next is a resolution, and this is Resolution 2025-HS-15. This is accepting donations for community, social, and behavioral health. There is a list here. I won't note all of the amounts, but it's the American Legion Auxiliary, Centered Health Chiropractic, Coon Rapids Super Senior Club, the Fridley Lions Club, Graphic Finishing Services, and One Fool Two Stooges Sports Bar and Grill. Altogether, they are donating $3,350 in total, and I will, well, I'll offer that in the slate, but that is a resolution. The next action item is under Economic Assistance. Economic Assistance requires approval for the 2026-2027 M-Fib County Biannual Service Agreement, which outlines services and budget needs for the family public assistance programs, including Minnesota Family Investment Program, Diversionary Work Program, and Emergency Assistance. The total annual budget allocation, oh goodness, excuse me, is $4,225,294, and there is a detailed outline in there. I will just make a quick note that the Diversionary Work Program will be sunsetting in 2026. This, the services actually will remain. It's just a, it's going to be put into M-Fib in the future. And then the last action item is under the Job Training Program. This is to authorize to apply and accept funds from the Minnesota Department of Employment and Economic Development, adult career services, not to exceed $750,000. If awarded, the project, the contract period will support state fiscal years 2026 through 2027, with contracts in place as soon as deed finalizes, award execution, with funding ending in June 30th, 2027. So this is in partnership with Anoka Technical College and Metro North Adult Basic Education. If granted, the funding will support Nursing Assistant Program and Pre-Practical Nursing Classes. These classes allow for students to apply for the LPN Diploma Program or Healthcare Technology Certificate Program. And with that, that concludes the entire slate, and I will go ahead and move Action Items 1 through 8 in Human Services.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We have a motion before I ask for a second. Does anyone wish to move, remove any of these items for a separate vote? Seeing none. Do I have a second?
Second.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner, seconded by Commissioner Jepson. Any questions, comments? Hearing and seeing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
And that passes unanimously. Any informational items from the meeting, Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. There were two informational items. One was we reviewed the proposed amendments for the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance. That is something that will continue to develop, and there will be a public hearing about that here shortly. The last informational was we received our annual reports, both for the Job Training Center and for the Anoka County Human Services Division. Both of those are on our website. I do always encourage the public to take a look at that, but there is detailed information about statistics and programs. And with that, that concludes my report.
Thank you, Commissioner Meisner. We'll now move down to the Transportation Committee meeting, and Commissioner Jepson.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. The Transportation Committee of the whole met last week, Thursday, October 23rd at 8:30 AM, and there was no one in attendance to give public comment. There are three, excuse me, there are three contracts on the consent agenda for approval. The first is Contract C0011952 with TKDA in the amount of $327,312 for the preliminary design, environmental documentation, and final design services for intersection improvement projects at 109th Avenue, Interment Players Parkway, and 109th Avenue and Radisson Road in the city of Blaine. The second contract is C0011463. This is a joint powers agreement with the cities of Andover and Anoka for signal reconstruction and pedestrian ramp improvements along Round Lake Boulevard at the intersections of Roosevelt Street, 135th Avenue, 136th Avenue, and Bunker Lake Boulevard. All of these signals will be fully replaced, and all are within our, within both the cities, which makes this three-party JPA necessary. There are three remaining intersections at 138th Lane, 140th Lane, and 143rd Lane, which will undergo modifications and some upgrades, which impacts the city of Andover only. The final, so that final contract JPA is number C0011464, which is just that city of Andover JPA, and for those additional intersections along Round Lake Boulevard, construction for this full project will begin in 2026. And with that, Mr. Chair, that ends the consent agenda items.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone wish to pull any of these three things off the agenda for a separate vote? Seeing none. Do I have a motion?
I'll move it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Schulte, and I will second it. Just to thank our Transportation Department and Joe McPherson, who's here today, the finish of Bunker Lake Boulevard. It's now done. The long summer is over. But for those who travel that every single day, they realize now how bad a shape it was in and how great a shape it is now. And then just a warning to everybody that now it'll be Round Lake Boulevard through, not too far from Bunker. So, but again, the project went well, and the final, the final project looks excellent. So thank you, Joe, and thanks to your entire staff. Anyone else? Hearing none. This is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Schulte.
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson.
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner.
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich.
Aye.
Commissioner Brastad.
Aye.
Commissioner Reiner.
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash.
Aye. And that passes unanimously. Any informational items, Commissioner Jepson?
Yeah, just a few things I'd like to mention. We got an update on the third quarter numbers of our transportation management organization, Commute Solutions. In addition, we heard preliminary numbers on how Metro Micro in Blaine is doing, and the number consistently grows week after week of ridership, so that is really, really great news, and I look forward to further updates on how that new service is being used. I did want to, just on a personal note, I was unable to attend the Human Services Committee meeting that Commissioner Meisner just alluded to, all those different items that were discussed. I couldn't attend because I was at the Torn Zero Death Conference at Mystic Lake earlier last week. And I just want to mention that we are in a good trend for keeping our roads more safe. We have 79 less deaths this year at this time than we did last year at this time, which for Mike Hansen, the Director of Public Safety, that's not good news, but it's a good trend. So that's 79 more people who are coming home to their families every day, which is a good thing. So just a public safety announcement to, to major things that you can do to keep our roads continue to be safe: wear your seatbelt and slow down. So with that, Mr. Chair, that ends my Transportation Committee information.
Thank you, Commissioner Jepson. I noticed in part of what we had in the Board meeting, or the Transportation meeting, was regarding the, the Metro Micro service, and I received this from State Representative Kerry Rierauer that Wednesday, November 5th, from 2:00 PM to 3:00 PM at North Town Mall. There will be a presentation by the Metropolitan Council regarding this. It's called the Blaine Metro Transit Outreach Event, and it's, public is welcome. So you can reach out to Commissioner Rierauer, excuse me, State Representative Rierauer, or State Representative Matt Norris, who's also a part of that, and if you have any questions. But otherwise, it's going to be Tuesday, November 5th, from 2:00 to 3:00 PM at the North Town Transit Center, located at the North Town Mall in Blaine. Moving on to our next item on our agenda is, here we go. We have a public hearing to obtain comments on proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance, and that is to consider Ordinance 2025-3, Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance Amendment One. But this is the public hearing. I'll turn it over to the county attorney, Mr. Johnson.
Thank you, Chair Gamash. Commissioners, I will now open the public hearing portion of the meeting. The time is 9:57 AM. I ask that the minutes reflect that the notice of this public hearing was published on October 17th, 2025, in the Anoka County Union to inform the public that a hearing would occur during the regular meeting of the Anoka County Board of Commissioners on today's date, October 28th, 2025, to allow public comment on the proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance as set forth in the published notice of public hearing. Before we receive public comments, it's my understanding that we have a couple of people here from Public Health. It's Joe Amerman, who is a senior program planner, and also Randy Prebble, the Assistant Director. And Joe, I don't know if you have just a brief summary of what those amendments entail for the Board. That might be helpful at this point in time, and then we'll turn to the live portion of the public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. Good morning, Commissioners. So in very brief summary, what you have before you today is a series of small amendments to the ordinance that was adopted in February governing cannabis businesses. These are specifically bringing low potency retailers under the same regulatory framework and basically just including them in the ordinance. So this is the, kind of the convenience stores and gas stations that are selling the edibles and seltzers you may have seen sort of throughout the county. So very briefly, that is what we're doing here today.
Thank you, Joe. Just before you step down, did we receive any written comments or messages submitted to you? You were in the published notice of the public hearing prior to the hearing.
Yep. As of about three minutes ago, no, we have not received any.
Very good. We will now begin the live public comment portion of the hearing, and the purpose of this part of the public hearing is to solicit any comments and gather public opinions regarding the proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance, Ordinance Number 2025-01, to address the requirements of Minnesota Statute, Chapter 342. Generally, we announce a few ground rules in case there are members of the public here, but I'll just call out to see if there are any members of the public who wish to provide comments. Now is your opportunity. So before I get into ground rules, let's see if there's anybody that's, that's here to address the county board. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the county board on the proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance? Seeing none, I'll call two more times. Are there any members of the public who would like to address the county board on the proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance? Last call. Any members of the public who would like to address the county board on the proposed amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance? Seeing no members of the public that have come to address the county board on the topic that is on today's agenda regarding amendments to the Anoka County Cannabis Business Ordinance, I will now close the public comment portion of the meeting and turn the matter back to you, Mr. Board Chair.
Thank you, county attorney Johnson, and thank you, again, Joe, for the work you did and getting all this cleared up. I know that we've had some long, probably, times to make sure we've got everything in order, and I'm glad that we have it here before us today to, to get that through. So as I indicated, we have a resolution. Excuse me, let me get back to.
Amended ordinance.
Thank you. Getting back to the right page. Okay. Okay, Mr. Chair. Yes, county.
Can I offer, actually move, Ordinance 2025-3?
Excellent. I was going to look for that and ask for that. So, it's been moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do we have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any discussion by the county? Commissioner Reinert.
Yeah, just a short comment about this action. You know, I'm not in favor of the commercialization of these substances, but that is out of our control. The state has decided that these substances are legal for commercialization. But, you know, with that, too, we need to have an ordinance in place so that the operation of these businesses, you know, do have some guardrails. So, I will be supporting this.
Any other, oh, Commissioner Meisner?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. And just to piggyback off of Commissioner Reinert, there was similar discussion in the actual committee. And basically, I just wanted to state, like, this is something that the counties are mandated to do. And so, by doing this, we are also working our best with business and community partners to ensure that the most positive outcomes happen with this. But again, we don't have any control, per se, over these laws. Thank you.
Anyone else? Commissioner Heinrich.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The terminology, I wonder if it wouldn't be helpful for the public to understand that this amendment or ordinance is bringing the low potency verbiage into the already ordinance, to make sure everything's under one umbrella. Low potency, it doesn't actually mean low potency, or it shouldn't be contrived as lower potent than other forms. I wonder if we can maybe have a little bit of comment about why that term is used?
Joe?
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Thank you, Commissioner. One of the things where I always try to emphasize is that lower potency products are still very potent. They're very, you know, unsafe to be using and driving and things like that. They are simply products derived from a different part of the plant. But through the scientific process, can be distilled into beverages and gummies that are very potent. And we try to make sure that people keep that in mind because that terminology is sort of a, just for ease of definition and regulation, come down from the state. And one of the dangers of that is that people are under the mistaken impression that it is somehow safer or sort of less dangerous to use. So, we do try to emphasize that in our communication.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
That kind of brings up a question, and I was kind of wondering about this myself. The drinks that you now see usually in a liquor store, they're not, are they under the same rules as going from grocery to liquor as we have in the state of Minnesota for liquor? You know, you can't, they can sell certain kinds of, what? It used to be 3-2 beer. I don't even know if we have 3-2 beer anymore. But are these types of drinks available to be sold within those and not just in liquor stores?
Yeah, that is correct. So, the, those seltzers that are up to 10 milligrams a container are the same, whether you get them at a liquor store, a gas station, convenience store, or grocery store. They are the same product.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions, comments? All right, hearing none. We have a motion, and it has been seconded. All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it passes unanimously. Thank you. And we'll move down to the public hearing, number nine. It's to obtain comments concerning the issuance of General Obligation Capital Improvement Plan Bonds under an approved five-year capital improvement plan for years 2026 through 2030. Cory is here to give us the update before we move to a public hearing.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the county board. My name is Cory Camp from the Chief Financial Officer for Anoka County. Yes, we've talked about our capital improvement plan. So, I'm going to walk through a very high-level presentation on it. I believe we're set up here, so let's see if we can go. All right, so, let's see how this works. Here we go. Oops. All right, so, first of all, as we think about our capital improvement plan, again, I just bring up our mission and our values. And, you know, our goal is with our, both our budget and capital improvement plan is that we're following both our mission and our values: respectful, be innovative, be fiscal responsible. Our strategic framework, many of the projects within the capital improvement plan fall within transportation, or public safety, livability, many of our strategic priorities as well. And so, so just kind of bringing that up. What does the CIP include? It includes projects over $100,000 that are improving the county's infrastructure, equipment that's costing more than $25,000, and all Anoka County vehicle purchases. If it's going to be licensed, we do put it in here. So, and that is all part of our program. So, so as we look, we're going to focus on 2026. This includes 2026 to 2030. The 2026 plan assumes $150.2 million in spend. The majority of that comes from non-county property tax sources. The majority comes from, you know, and I'm going to walk through the funding sources in a little bit. But as you can see, it's spread out, road and bridge, or transportation is, $55 million is one of the highest. We do have a new facility that is planned. My parking ramp is planned next year, so that's really the focus on that. And that's part of that jail project. Whether that happens then or not, this is something we've been placing within our CIP the last few years as we continue to work through the jail project and stuff. Parks, most of these are funded through other sources as well, $7 million. And then the building has a variety of different funding sources. So, how are we funding all of these? Generally speaking, we have transportation sales tax. We have the advanced transportation tax, which is another part of what we have. Anything debt issued, obviously, we'll have a debt levy on it. That is the parking ramp building. But we also have projects that are being issued related, where we're looking at debt probably out in '27 related to some of the building improvements and court improvements and Rum River improvements, and we talked about those. There's a lot of federal and state program. The other, for $3.7 million, represents cities participating into our transportation program. The fees, the $4.5 million, that really represents the fleet costs coming through the fleet fund. So, this is kind of an allocation, it's coming out of all the departments. And then the use of capital funds for $22 million is a variety of funds within our capital projects. About $4 million of this is related to the Household Hazardous Waste Fund. You've got other sources for money we've set aside over the years to pay for certain programs, as well as the annual allocations we do to the Building Fund and IT Fund are all part of that. And those projects are reflected within there. So, this gives you what the '26 program looks like. This becomes what we call our CIB, or part of our adopted budget on December 2nd, when we go. So, just to kind of put that out there. So, as you look at our outstanding debt from 2024 to 2030, we wanted to kind of focus on this because this public hearing is kind of related to that. As you can see, our outstanding debt with the issuance of a new bonds related to the jail is expected to rise significantly. This graph kind of reflects that. I'm going to give you some of the numbers because I know that had been talked about back. At the end of 2024, we had $26.4 million in outstanding debt. So, we had paid this down over the years, and that was purposeful by the county board. And so, as we go forward, our goal is to be strategic and planful with how we use that. It is a tool. It is not to be used necessarily every year for every project. And so, that's what we kind of look at. In '25, we did issue $21 million related to the 911 facility, emergency communications. That was erected. And so, that did increase us to $43 million, and that's where we're planned to be at the end of '25. As we get into '26, the $54 million represents the new parking ramp. And then we have a 23, in 2027, there's both the jail and a new bond issue related to the courthouse and Government Center projects and Rum River projects, which we've talked about a little bit. And again, these are anticipated. These amounts will change as we get closer. This is just a plan to show where does this go. And so, as you can see, we do raise all the way up to $344 million in 2027, which would be the highest. And so, just to kind of let you know where this is headed. So, all right. And so, what does this do to the levy? Because with that debt, we have to issue levy to pay for it. And as you can see, our levy is expected to grow as well. Right now, we are sitting around, in 2024, we're just under $6 million. And as we hit 2026, we're going up to $7 million. And then going forward, yeah, a sec, here we go. Going forward from 2026, we're about $8 million. Next year, we're going to grow to about $24 million and then begin coming down. And that's with this jail building, which is a huge infrastructure project that we're undertaking. So, again, this just at least shows you what the plan is. And again, the CIP is a planning document. It doesn't mean it's going to happen exactly this way, but it puts out where strategically the county is planning to go over the next five years. So, just wanted to kind of show that out there. And so, our purpose with this public hearing is to receive testimony on the issuance of general obligation capital bonds. We are focused on the parking ramp bond plan for next year, plus the $23 million related to the bonds on the improvements plan for the Government Center, as well as Rum River Campus, as well as courts. So, those are the two bond issues that we're really focused on here. So, in future years, we will, the CIP hearing will be focused on the jail bonds and stuff. But, so with that, once the public hearing is completed, we will ask the county board to consider adopting the capital improvement plan for fiscal years '26 to 2030. So, with that, I'm going to, do you have any questions?
Thank you, Cory. I think what we'll do is turn it over to the county attorney for the public hearing portion. And then if we have any questions after the public hearing, we'll keep you up there. So, I'll turn it over to County Attorney Johnson for the public hearing.
Thank you, Chair Gamash, members of the county board. I will now open the public hearing portion of the meeting. The time is now 10:13 a.m. I ask that the minutes reflect that the notice of this public hearing was published on October 17th, 2025, in the Anoka County Union, according to statute, to inform the public that a hearing would occur during the regular meeting of the Anoka County Board of Commissioners on today's date, October 28th, 2025, to receive public testimony on the issuance of general obligation capital improvement plan bonds, all sometimes referred to them as CIP bonds, as set forth in the published notice of the public hearing in today's agenda. To Mr. Camp, did we receive any written comments or messages submitted to you or to the county prior to today's meeting?
Mr. Johnson, we have not.
Thank you, sir. We'll now begin the live testimony portion of the hearing. The purpose of this part of the hearing is to receive public testimony on the issuance of CIP bonds. If there are any members of the public who wish to provide comments, now is your opportunity. And I will call three times for it. So, are there any members of the public who would like to address the county board on the CIP bonds? Calling a second time, are there any members of the public here who would like to address the county board on the issuance of CIP bonds or the bond plan? Last call, are there any members of the public who would like to address the board on the topic that we have here today, the issuance of CIP bonds or the bond plan? Seeing and hearing no one come before the county board for the public hearing, there are no comments to be provided today. I will now close the public hearing portion of the meeting and turn the meeting back to you, Mr. Board Chair, for consideration of the adoption of the CIP plan.
Thank you, County Attorney Johnson. And we have a resolution before us, Resolution 2025-117, adopting a five-year capital improvement plan and providing preliminary approval for the issuance of bonds thereunder. Do I have an offer of the resolution?
I'll offer the resolution, Mr. Chair.
It's been offered by Commissioner Schulte. Any questions or comments? Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I have a question for the county attorney, I think. In the actual notice of the public hearing, is it too late to correct what I think should be changed? I mean, just for the record, for the minutes. On a relocation of the parking ramp, can we put in forward slash garage for the record? Obviously, the public won't get that notice because it's already been out. But for posterity, it's in the resolution. It's already in the resolution, but...
I don't think there, the position we've always taken is that it's, we're talking about the same building.
Right.
So, I, you know, can't amend a notice of a public hearing, but I don't think that that notice of a public hearing is deficient, per se, because we're talking about the same building, and it's clear in the resolution.
Okay, thank you. Thank you, Mr. Camp.
Commissioner Jepson, you had a question?
Yeah, thank you. So, those are really very large numbers. And I commend previous boards for paying down or paying down those bonds in, over the last decade or two. But that's a huge jump from where we are today to where we're going to be in three years, possibly. I mean, those are good projections. So, just my question is, in using bonds to pay for a parking ramp, jail, court improvements, those are very unique, infrastructure, very unique buildings that not a lot of, correct me if I'm wrong, not a lot of other funding opportunities are available to us. Like, our department of heads are so good at finding grants and, you know, partnerships with, and that's just not available to us for these specific purposes. Is that accurate?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, Commissioner Jepson, Commissioners, that would be accurate, that we are limited on our funding, especially around jails, especially around, you know, there's not a lot of federal grants that kind of come out for that. You know, they really focus on sometimes public safety services or more unique buildings or building challenges that they want counties to look at. But no, we've not seen that on the jail side or for those. And then these are just facilities, our normal facilities, the improvements that we have to do to our facilities, which is every day.
Thank you.
Commissioner Schulte.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your comments, Commissioner Jepson. This is a massive expense that we're embarking on. This is actually the, technically, the borrowing of money to pay for the massive expense. I am a part of that board that chose to pay down that debt that we, that was on our books when I came on the county board. It was important to pay that down. That was the credit card bill that came due, and we paid that down. But this is no different than taking out a mortgage when you buy a house. It's time to build a house. And this is public safety, which I've always put on the top of my list. If you don't feel safe in your own house, your own city, your own county, your own state, you're not going to stay. And we want people to stay in Anoka County. So, we're going to make it a safe place, and that's what a jail is. This is public safety. We prioritize it. And this has been put off too long, so it's time. But to do that, we need to spend this money. We need to build a jail. And to do that, we need to take down a parking garage and build a new one. So, that's what this borrowing is for. I would love to have saved up enough money to do this, so we didn't have to borrow, but that was not possible the way we conducted business for the last 10 years. We paid down debt instead of saving money. So, that's where we're at. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Schulte. Anyone else with any comments or questions? This is going to, this is large, and it's a bit of a shock. I only had one question for Cory, and I don't even know if this is factual, but I had heard it at one point in time from someone from Shisago County, that when they went to build their jail at some point in time, not in the too recent past, that they did get some, either federal or state money. And I can't verify that, and I don't know if anybody's ever heard of that. But have you ever had, run across somebody getting them ready like that?
It's generally tied to having a justice contract. And usually, you then also have a contract to board prisoners for the federal government.
And that's what they do.
Sherwin County did that multiple times.
Got it, got it. And I know one of the things that I think we've had the discussion about is that this jail is for Anoka County. Paid, it's going to be paid for by the Anoka County taxpayers, obviously. And it will, and we're not looking towards finding other ways to fund the building of it with federal contracts. So, I can understand that. So, thank you. Thank you, Jim. Any other questions? Otherwise, oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Brassad.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I just want to clarify that when we're looking at the capital improvement plan for 2026 through 2030, that does not mean that everything listed in years '27, '28, '29, '30 can't be changed or can't be removed. I would challenge this board to really scrutinize those years and really balance needs and wants. I've always been in support of the new jail. That has been a long process. And it is, with the parking ramp and jail combined, we've been told that our... we've been told that our delay in this project could have financed the parking ramp. So, that's frustrating. I mean, those are real numbers. Those are taxpayer numbers. If we would have moved forward, which was out of our control, we could have financed that parking ramp with the cost of the, these delays. Hopefully, now that we're looking at making a jail smaller and even more efficient, we can gain a little bit of ground. But yeah, the, the, this is hard to swallow when you're looking at it like this. But thank you, Cory.
Yeah, because Mr. Chair, commissioners, Commissioner Brassid, keep in mind the, the plan is a planning document, meaning '26, this will be part of the CIB in the budget, so they're more likely to occur, but still, you have to act on them so they don't necessarily have to. And '27 to 2030, this is our plan based on our strategic priorities, that, and we will have discussions next year during budget time, and they can change. So, totally up to you.
Commissioner Meisner?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Chair. And yeah, I really do appreciate these comments, and we obviously had some lengthy discussion within the actual committee meeting. And I know you guys have heard me say this before, clearly, there are things that are required of us, so we just don't have a choice. And the price tag is a price tag in terms of the plan and the things that we do have control over and the things that we are able to say yes and no to as time continues. My only thing is, I always strive to find that balance because there is also a cost to deferment. And so, that's something that I always consider, it cannot be only dollars and cents in this way, and so, that's just something that I would like to voice in terms of context as we make these decisions through time. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Anyone else? All right, seeing none, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Mr. Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassid?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
No.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
And that passes six to one. Item number 10, we have this item, very excited about and very happy to have before us today. We're gonna consider approving an employment contract with Kate Heffernan and appointing Kate as the chief officer for human services effective October 28th, 2025. I know Jim Dickinson helped lead this, this effort, and I will give him a few minutes to talk a little bit about the process and about Kate.
Ford, we did have a, an open process, so this was advertised. And through that process, we went through those that were deemed qualified candidates, had an interview of four, which Kate was the obvious selection out of that. Kate has an extensive breadth of knowledge within the human service area. She brings 25 years of experience in the human service field. This, which Kate is currently the deputy, this promotion and her continued leadership will benefit the division by ensuring that our mission continues and will deliver programs and promote safe and healthy communities. Now, one thing that, through this process, you know, I, I offered the recommendation, but one thing that I think going through the process that I can say is, this was a process, but we're fortunate that we currently have Kate. That was a great hire previously. Kate is doing a fantastic job, and now I'll say we're even more fortunate that she will be leading going forward. So, with that, I offer Kate as the recommendation from administration.
Thank you, Mr. Dickinson. Commissioner Meisner, would you like to make a motion?
Yes, Mr. Chair, I would like to make the motion.
I'll second it.
It's been moved by Commissioner Meisner and seconded by Commissioner Schulte. Discussion, questions?
Yeah, Mr. Chair, I, I think what Administrator Dickinson failed to mention is this was a nationwide search with people coming in from out of state for interviews, and Kate still rose way above them. So, it's, it says quite a bit about Kate, and we're thrilled to have her lead this division. And it is our, one of our biggest divisions, well, is our biggest division with the most people and does some of the hardest work that we do as a county, so, thank you, Kate. Congratulations.
Commissioner Jepson?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. Well, Kate, it's been a privilege to get to know you both personally and professionally these last year or two, how many years now? Two years? And, and I, I thank you for applying for the job, first of all, and many, many good things have been said about you. I, I do want to recognize that you are walking into a very, very challenging time, and I just, I'm thankful that you're in this role on behalf of Anoka County. But I also want to voice that if there's anything you need, if there's any information that we need to have and speak to different groups of people on behalf of Anoka County Human Services, you know you can always, and I hope I can speak for all of us, we have your back. And I appreciate your willingness to be part of this, in a bigger role in this team. I see you brought some team members with you for support, and, and that's fun to see as well. So, maybe a little too soon, we haven't voted yet, but congratulations and thank you.
Any other comments before we vote? And then I'm gonna, I'm gonna offer you an opportunity to come up and say a few words. But I know, I'm very, we're very excited about this. As Commissioner Jepson mentioned, that you're walking in, in a very difficult time in human services with what's going on. But I was, I've been impressed with the work you've done and look forward to being probably down at the legislature a few times with you to, to help address some of these issues with our state senators and representatives as well, and I know you'll do a great job at that as well. So, this is a roll call vote.
Commissioner Meisner?
Aye.
Commissioner Heinrich?
Aye.
Commissioner Brassid?
Aye.
Commissioner Reinert?
Aye.
Commissioner Gamash?
Aye.
Commissioner Schulte?
Aye.
Commissioner Jepson?
Aye.
And that passes unanimously.
Yay!
Kate, would you like a few minutes? We'd love to hear from you, and I see you have something written down, so that's good. I didn't want to surprise you too much.
I didn't care in that she was gonna scoot.
Thank you so much, Mr. Chair, commissioners. This is a real honor, and yes, I wasn't for sure planning on speaking, but I figured you might have asked. I, I just really want to say, it's been an absolute privilege to work with the leaders in human services these last two years as I've been deputy director. It's an amazing team, doing really challenging work, and it's true, it is especially challenging right now, and I couldn't be more proud to be part of the team and to be able to lead the team. The heart of the team here in human services is about serving residents, and that's what my heart is too, so I'm really pleased to be able to lead that team. I've learned so much from people here, and I intend to keep the values that we've had along the way of serving residents and caring about people. So, thank you so much, I really appreciate this. It's an honor.
Thank you, Kate, and we're, we're excited and thankful that you were in the role that you were and decided to take on this, this bigger challenge. And I know that you have a great staff that are following, and we look forward to just some, a great time. I mean, it's gonna be great, the, the work you're doing, and I'm just appreciative that you're there in that role. Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? All right, then we'll move on to committee appointments. This is considered reappointing the following to the Community Corrections Advisory Board for terms ending October 27th, as recommended by the Human Services Committee of the Hall. We have, first one is Pat Carlson representing District Four and Dr. Roger Warner representing Education.
It's moved by Mr. Chair.
It's moved by Commissioner Schulte. Do I have a second?
Second.
Seconded by Commissioner Meisner. Any comments? Hearing none, all in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Hearing none, it's approved unanimously. And with nothing else to come before the county board this morning, we are adjourned. And we have...